Rotate your phone. You can't turn your phone while recording. Okay, we know. You're live.
All right. So first of all, thank you everyone for joining us here tonight at my first town hall. We hope to make this a thing that's going to be a far more regular and consistent thing, whether it be semi-annually or quarterly. I would like to start having these more informal discussions on a more frequent basis over the course of my term here. And before I get into the town hall this evening, I would just like to report on a couple of great upcoming events that we have happening here in Little Falls. And before I do that, I'm going to apologize for the way I sound tonight. I seem to have this allergy thing hitting me like a tank today, so trying to get through this, but we'll do the best we can. So as far as events that we have coming up in Little Falls, we have on March 30th, this weekend, the Green Fair that's going to be happening right here in the Civic Center. I believe we're now up to 14 or 15 vendors that are going to be here. We are expecting to have a pretty good crowd. And that event is going to run from 12 to 4:00, right here in this room. We also have on April 6th, it's the opening day for the baseball and softball season here in town. So we will have the opening day parade starting at 9:00. And that will be followed by the opening day ceremonies about 9:45 down at Duva Field. So if you're available to join us there, please do that. There's also the town tasting on April 9th. That's at the Falls. Little Falls ABC actually runs that event, but it's a great event. It's a great get-together. They're a great organization for our town here, and they help with all the summer concerts and facilitating all of that for us here in town. On April 10th, we have our senior citizen dinner dance. So if you are a senior citizen in part of the town here, please reach out. We'd get you involved inside up for that as well. On May 24th, as we approach Memorial Day weekend, May 24th is the Friday before Memorial Day weekend, we are inviting everyone to join us at Wilmore Park that evening. We're going to be doing a little concert in the park. We're going to have PV joining us there. There should be activities and different food there. So we invite everyone to join us there. It's something new that the town hasn't done, but we're looking to get a little camaraderie going before the long holiday weekend and before the parade that happens at 10:00 a.m. on Saturday morning, May 25th. So if you're available for that, as every single year, join us down Main Street, starting all the way up by beyond School 3, almost, you know, the furthest end of Little Falls. And by the time everybody is part of the parade, we're almost at School 3. And that will make its way down towards Wilmore Park, where we intend to arrive closer to 11:30, where we do our Memorial Day ceremony every single year. So please join us there. The other thing that we have coming up that everybody knows about is of course, the legendary Little Falls 4th of July Street Fair. So if you're around for the 4th of July this year, please join us here in Little Falls on Main Street, near the intersection of Stevens Ave. And finally, our summer concerts in the park will be starting throughout all the summer months. I believe there's 10 weeks this year that they're going. Little Falls ABC is going to be hosting concerts through July, August, and I think it's actually starting the last weekend in June this year. So join us in the parks on Thursday nights for those 10 weeks of outstanding concerts. Now that said, before we really get into the whole town hall, I just want to let everybody know that I intend that this evening will run somewhere between an hour, hour and a half. I want to make sure that I address all the questions without boring anyone here tonight, because I do want people to come back here and make this more of a regular thing so we can have a regular dialogue. And I don't want people dreading coming here thinking, "The mayor's going to talk for three hours." So we're going to try to keep it light. We'll try to keep a regular conversation going. And I am happy to answer any questions that you may have as they arise. I do have a number of talking points. And if anybody would like to list some questions on it, if they're on Facebook Live right now, if anyone would like to post their comments on Facebook Live, those comments will be making their way up to me and I'll be trying to answer those questions or comments as they are posed on Facebook Live as well. That said, I do have some updates regarding flooding in town and where we stand with all of that. Flooding is something that I addressed when I first ran. It was something that I've always felt was always at the forefront of everyone's minds when a flood event happened here in Little Falls. And as soon as the water would recede, so were everybody's thoughts about flooding. And although we haven't had a flood now in a couple of months, it's something that continues to be an issue that we need to address in the municipality. And I say that because I have been working diligently on both the Peckman and the Passaic Rivers here in town with the issues and the concerns that we have regarding the flooding. And as far as the Peckman goes, I want to give an update. I have been working with the Army Corps of Engineers on a very, very regular basis. There are emails constantly circulating with them. The plan as is, right now, is a two-phase plan. The first phase being a diversion covert that's going to be installed near our Little Falls DPW yard. And the covert itself is absolutely massive. And it's going to take, they estimate, 60 to 75 percent of the water during a flood event, and it's going to redirect it to the Passaic River, starting at the Little Falls DPW yard, before it ever reaches the Jackson Park area of town. And the intent is that there's a big inlet there that then runs through the DPW yard. It will run through where the former cabinet building was behind Jackson Park and behind the rec center. The diversion covert will run under the small field at Duva Field, and will run through under Patterson Ave and across the Meat Cutters parking lot, and it will dump the water into the Passaic River there. This is something that has a very large price tag on it, but again, being spearheaded by the Army Corps of Engineers, the plans are continuously evolving and moving forward, which is absolutely promising. I have only been, met now, for a little over two years, but speaking to individuals who have been involved with the flooding in Little Falls here, far more than I even have, they've actually indicated to me that for the first time, it seems like we may actually have something here. We may actually be moving forward, rather than it just being discussion and studies, as everybody knows, has been a common trend here by Little Falls regarding the Passaic and Peckman rivers. That said, the covert is going to be 30 feet wide and almost 20 feet high is the estimations right now. They're still working on those final numbers. That is a massive tunnel that literally multiple cars can drive through at a given time. Of course, not the intent, but it will take a great amount of the water in the Peckman River and divert it to the Passaic River, which as we know is not a flash flood river. So by the time that the water hits the Passaic River, the Passaic River doesn't necessarily pose an issue for everyone downstream. So the Army Corps believes that that is one major part of solving the Peckman River flooding issue. The second major issue that we face along the Peckman is really the banks and the erosion that we face, which undermines the trees, causing all of our bridges to back up, which is the primary reason that we've really seen flooding down Hobson and down a number of our other streets in recent times. I say that because Phase 2 of the Army Corps' project is bank stabilization. They want to make their way up and down, all the way into almost the start of the Peckman River, well into Cedar Grove, and they want to stabilize the banks. They're not sure yet if that involves driving sheet pilings into the ground, or if that involves... They call it a log system, which you can actually see here in Little Falls. We do have one. We have a log system set up on what is at the intersection of Francisco Ave and Wilmore Road and Cedar Grove Road. If you look downstream over the bridge, there's sort of concrete, they call them logs, that are stacked up, that help with the bank stabilization and bank erosion. So that's something else that we have there that they're looking to do. And again, they're not sure exactly which type or which style, but the bank erosion is something that they are looking to address. So that's the update on the Peckman. As far as the Passaic River goes, I am actually pleased to report that our Congresswoman, Mikey Sherrill, recently held an event for all of the mayors in her district that border the Passaic River. And I was actually astonished at how many of us there are that are affected by the Passaic River. And the concerns that were expressed throughout the entire meeting were very similar to the ones that I had in Wilmore Park share, and all of this, all of the towns up and down, the entire congressional district, 11. And some of the towns were talking about implementing drones flying up and down a couple of times a year to ensure that there was no blockages, or downed trees, or things of the sort that may cause issues. And other towns were talking about the real major issue being that we have no control over the levels upstream that release the water, causing oftentimes significant damage to a good portion of our town. And she indicated that she was going to be reaching out to the Army Corps, and again, there's 15 mayors there, that were all on the same exact page in getting her to work with us. And every single one of them was as passionate as I was about resolving and finding some sort of resolve to the Passaic River and the flooding damages that it causes, because it is a major issue for our town and all the other towns up and down the river. And we are all working to anxiously resolve that problem. She is going, apparently, some of this predates my time, but there were a couple of plans that apparently the Army Corps is supposed to be finalizing and reporting back to us with a more final plan within the next year. She was unaware of that as well. She's going to be looking into this. This meeting just happened recently. And we are looking to, again, continue that fight to combat the river flooding of both the Passaic and the Peckman River here in Little Falls. And it's not something that has fallen on deaf ears. It only comes to a head when there is actual flooding. So we are working on that. That said, we also were able to recently acquire our TracO that was in a joint grant with Wilmore Park to help clean the Peckman River. We actually, it took some additional time to acquire the TracO, because the original grant, the money that was being provided, where we were obtaining the grant from wanted to be used only to clean the Peckman River itself. And we saw some issues with that, in that there are a number of contribuaries to the Peckman River that sometimes get blocked and clogged that the TracO will work for. And we also wanted to be able to use it for the Passaic River and the items that we can reach to clean that. So we modified the grant. It was approved, and we now have a TracO that we can use ourselves, along with Wilmore Park, to clean the river and keep it flowing freely. Is there a question?
Oh, we were discussing, what are you saying? Track... I thought you were saying, oh, and it's TracHo.
A TracHo, it's an excavator. Yeah, just the style. It's just an excavator with a big arm and a bucket, like you see on a regular construction site. The town bought it in conjunction with Wilmore Park. We've agreed to share all the costs 50/50, including the purchase of it, again, most of which was offset by a grant. And we're going to share all the removal of all of the shawls and all of the debris in the river as well. You know what? I may take you up on that.
Can I ask another question? I really apologize, because I am not up on this stuff. I just look at emails, so I came tonight. We're talking about all the flooding. You didn't mention all the towns, so that's really good. But when you're talking about taking the Peckman and putting that big tunnel, the lack of whatever it is, covert, and it goes into the Passaic River, how is that not affecting Wilmore Park downstream and the river road roll that water goes?
Sure. So that water actually makes it into the Passaic River just a little bit further downstream anyway. What they're looking to do-
Pass that, like, loop around McFried Avenue, will Wilmore Park flush?
Correct. Currently, the Peckman already makes its way into the Passaic River just a little bit further down.
Oh, okay.
So what they're doing is just cutting off a portion of the water prior to whether it floods Little Falls, and really, this portion of the river affects Wilmore Park primarily in its coal shop, the coal shopping center, that entire strip there. So it would help fix all of that flooding issue that Wilmore Park faces in that area, that Wilmore Park is fully supportive of the diversion covert that's being proposed by the Army Corps right now.
So you're saying coal, but do you know McFried Avenue, when it goes down around by Carvel, past the school, then there's a little strip mall right by McFried Avenue?
Yes.
Well, back there, it's what I know someone's house, it ripped down, and they won't even sell again, which they shouldn't.
I don't know that the Peckman makes its way down there.
Not down the Passaic, so...
The Passaic, yes. So the Passaic River, so when the Peckman dumps into the Passaic River during a flash incident, the Passaic River is, generally speaking, extremely low at the time, because the flash incident takes several days to actually make all its way downstream in the Passaic. And the Passaic River usually crests, and everybody has water in their basements and in their houses, two to three days after the real rainstorm. And we face that here in Little Falls oftentimes, that when Parkway and the streets in that area of Little Falls and the Woodcraw Ave section of town, those streets are underwater, usually it's sunny and 72 degrees, because the flood, the rain event has already got on, but the river slowly rises over two to three days, and that's when they are impacted. And that's why by diverting this water, it won't really have an impact. And again, it makes its way into the Passaic just a couple of feet downstream anyway.
Hi. I actually live on the Passaic River. And I know that we were having, a couple of years ago, we were having a lot of flooding, a couple of years, but Governor Christie, who I don't like, did one thing for us. He told the towns upstream that they can't just open up their floodgates. He told them they had to open up little by little. And since then, we haven't had an issue.
Yeah, that's true. Governor Christie did sign some executive order a number of years ago that required them to release their water in anticipation of storms, if they knew they were coming.
Right.
And there's a lot of geological measures that they use to determine that, and again, to release it at a slower rate. And those are two things that I do believe have helped us in all of the towns up and down the Passaic River. Hopefully that continues, but I do think there's a lot more that can be done, because we've still come close on a number of occasions. And I want to make sure that that's not even the case.
So we're all having the same question, and where do you want the funding to come from?
So for the Army Corps project?
And whatever, anyone? Yeah, I guess eventually we'll need to alleviate it.
Sure. So those projects are largely funded by the federal government. Those are all things that are largely, and I would love to say entirely, but generally not, at least largely funded by the federal government. It goes into the national budget. It's all things that are going to be allocated here, which would be nice to have some of our national dollars coming back to New Jersey, especially here in Little Falls and the towns up and down, you know, the river, to really help us here. So there is some local share. Those figures are changing all the time. The amount of the original project, and one of the reasons that we kind of terminated their original proposal, was that it was in excess of $300 million, the project itself. And they wanted the municipality to fund 25 percent of it. That is literally impossible. The municipality runs now on a budget of $19 million a year. To fund 25 percent of a $300 million project, even over a period of time, would have been just financially impossible for the municipality to sustain. So there are ways that they are working to offset that number even further, on what is now going to be a much smaller price tag on the total project itself.
Is there a formula? Do you want to say, I don't know, how many people in the town, or square footage of the town, or miles, what percentage the town itself would bear of the total price to the project? Or the part of the town we'll fund?
For the Peckman River you're referring to? On the Peckman River?
Or either, anyone?
So we haven't actually seen a final plan, and we have no idea what the price tag would be for the Passaic River. That's the plan that the Army Corps is supposed to be providing us in the next year or so. The Peckman River plans we have seen, we've made modifications through them over a period of time, and there's now a real plan in place. And again, until this plan is more finalized, we don't know what the price tag on this will be. But we're looking to get a lot of offsetting funds from, and we're even going to be seeking help from the county and some of the other, you know, revenue sources for us to offset that, because the town can't sustain a several hundred million dollar price tag. Absolutely. The Army Corps of Engineers is still working on that. Oh, yes. On a very regular basis. It is. I think there are different groups that are working on each of the projects, but it is the Army Corps of Engineers overall.
So for the Peckman, it would be Cedar Grove and Little Falls and government funded? Is that...
No. So it would actually start in Cedar Grove, but primarily, most of the Peckman, 90-plus percent of it, is actually in Little Falls, where the project would be taking place. The Peckman does start well up, you know, all the way up at the Lake in Verona, I believe, runs all the way through Cedar Grove, makes its way into Little Falls, and we deal with the culmination of all of the rocks and boulders and debris that come downstream from there, causing the pileups and the issues that we have here. So we are the one most affected by it. And although the river is long, we're dealing with the real surge from it, the real damage from it, as well as Wilmore Park, again, primarily in the shopping centers and those areas there.
So then, you're going to go back and hopefully get funding from the town above?
Yes. Well, I'm hoping that the town in general will have very little actual cost associated with it, that we'll be able to get additional funds from the federal government. You bet. It was. It was a brand-new piece of equipment. We actually looked into used TracOs. It turns out that the price that municipalities can purchase this type of equipment at, at the rate, well, again, the rate that we can purchase equipment at as a municipality, it made that piece, the piece of equipment that we got, only about $7,000 more expensive than the same machine that was 20 years old and used. So although in my head it didn't make sense to buy a new machine and put it in the river, it ended up making sense by the time you, you know, looked at the price and how old the other machines were that we could have bought and used.
And the ownership was split between us and...
Between the two towns, correct. Yes. We've got 50/50 on everything in the acquisition of the TracO. We were briefly going 50/50 with the removal of all of the shawls and the debris and the de-watering and everything that we have to deal with. What's that?
Everything pulled out of the river.
We have to pay to get rid of it. It has to first-
We will do this.
So, yeah. So all of the debris that gets pulled out of the river needs to be stored for a period of time, and it needs to de-water. After it de-waters for a period of time, which again is somewhat counterintuitive, it then has to be tested for contamination. We have no real concerns with the contamination issues from the debris pulled from the Peckman. The Peckman is a very clean river, but it's still one of the steps that needs to be undertaken. Once that is tested, it can then be, we then have to pay to cart it off and dispose of it. So we are, we will be doing that with the debris that was pulled from the Peckman River during the prior storm within the next several months.
But how does that work? Because you're saying it's got to be tested for consistency, but you're testing it after you pull it out of the river and you put it somewhere.
Correct.
But where's the location?
Put it in the Peckman Reserve.
No, after they pull it from the river, you need to let all the water drain. Where is it sitting? Wild stream?
So during the emergency of August 11th and the days following that, we took that debris, we put it in the Peckman Preserve to de-water there. It's on Wilmore Road. There's a big area there that the county maintains.
You put it on land?
Correct.
It's on wetland. It's on a designated wetland that we pay, the county pays a lot of money for to preserve.
Yeah.
And so it's sitting there.
So-
So you think it's going to drain and contaminate the area that's being preserved?
Well, then why would it be tested?
So the question is, why would it be tested? Again, we're fairly confident that it's clean. There's never been an issue of contamination in the Peckman River. It's just a required step is to test it before disposing of it.
But the issue I have with it, my problem with it, is that it's an enormous amount of fill from the river. And it's covered trees and grasses and, I mean, it's enormous. It's very large. I don't know if you've been down there. And so you're going to go remove all that, that you're saying you're going to remove, and the trees have been killed, the grasses have been killed, the wetlands have been-
So I think there's an easy answer. This was a balancing act of whether or not we allow hundreds of towns, hundreds of homes in town, get flooded again, or have great potential to do that, or we place this debris, it's really clean rock and dirt, on wetlands that are, you know, that the county now maintains. To me, again, with every bit of good, sometimes there's a little bit of bad. In the balancing act for me, I couldn't allow hundreds of people to have the risk of being flooded again over putting some dirt on some grass. So that was the balancing act that we had to consider. And for me personally, again, I couldn't leave everybody that's affected by the Passaic River at risk just to not put some rocks on grass. So that's where we went.
But I'm asking for a plan. I think we are familiar with flooding. We are very familiar with it. So if this pertains to something that's going to happen again, maybe we should devise a plan or have a protocol. I think there may be other areas that we could put some of that for a de-watering or a wave area.
Well, I think the real plan is the bank stabilization of the river, which would then prevent the eroding from continuing, which would prevent the shawls from building up, which would prevent the need for us to remove this debris.
But I, so, I hear her concern. So look, I'm just asking the question. So after you take it and you let it de-water and all of that, and then dispose of, is there a plan to test the soil to see that it's been contaminated from all of the drainage?
If the material is not contaminated, the soil won't be contaminated. So we'll know that if the, and again, the Peckman runs extremely clean. There's never been an issue of contamination.
So what-if scenario? So what if, you know, there's a 2 percent chance-
Then it would have to be remediated.
That's a what-if. So you would have to do something. I think that would be a concern.
Who requires the testing?
It's all part of DEP regulations.
So you don't control it?
No. It's all the requirements that they've put on us in order to dispose of that type of dirt and rocks.
I have one other, a little sidebar question. Somebody in town told me recently, like, my neighbor, they've got the call, that there's a plan, and they're going to talk about this, so I called us, to move the bar down the street, over down to Cashmere or something, the land where it's supposed to go, is contaminated from an old car dealership? Is that going to be cheaper?
So that is something that, again, the town has absolutely nothing to do with. I have heard that there's private deals going on that may be the result of, but the town has absolutely zero to do with private businesses relocating and moving throughout the town. So there's no, again, there's no town involvement with that.
So no town involvement, big apartments and condos and all that? That's all businesses? You're buying or getting, like, someone said the dance school on Stevens Ave is going to replace it?
That is 100% a private deal that someone has, is looking to buy the building, and if the owner of the building sells it, and they get, you know, that's absolutely a private deal. There's no involvement from the town. Aside from new applications and new buildings coming before the planning board, the town has no other involvement with the contracts themselves.
So the same thing with just past the postal office?
So I can get into that a little bit too. That's the thing that we, and I'll certainly touch on that now. Now, we call that the Sting Act redevelopment zone. It was something that came before the council, as well as the planning board, on a number of occasions. And there's a developer who recently received approvals in that area for 185 apartments and 102 townhomes. It's an eight-acre piece of property. It spans from basically the western side of the homes that are by Woodside Ave. It doesn't affect the homes that are on Woodside, but all of those, everything from their backyards all the way up to the auto body shop before Rossi Paint. Those are not being relocated or removed, but everything in between those two things, that entire area. Correct. All those factories, all of that. And I can certainly get into that and some of the financial benefits that I think that's going to gain, because the town did have some involvement in the negotiation of that. And what the town did there is, most recently, actually last night, the municipality approved a pilot agreement, which is a payment in lieu of taxes agreement with the developers for both the multifamily as well as the townhomes. And to give everybody just the, first off, I'll talk about the financials, then we'll talk about what's going to be there. If, so actually, we'll talk about what's going to be there first. If you are on Main Street, standing across the street, looking at this entire redevelopment zone, and, you know, the railroad tractor to your right, the site, if you kind of split it in half, where I would say the left side of that area there is going to be 102 townhomes. There's going to be, they're estimating that all those townhomes are going to have a sale price of approximately $500,000 apiece. To the right half of that site, there's going to be a multifamily building there with 185 apartments. What the municipality did is we've entered into what's called a payment in lieu of taxes, a pilot agreement with the developer, and they are something that are permitted by statute, under New Jersey statute, to be offered to developers and builders. And the reason being-
What does that mean? You don't have to pay taxes while they're building?
No. So I'm getting exactly, so, so yes, you are right in that what they call them are not taxes, but they will be making substantial payments to the municipality, a far in excess of what that site is generating now. If they get into those figures, that entire site, the entire eight acres, is actually generating for the municipality for about $300,000 a year. Now, the municipality is, that entire site of the $300,000, you know, the municipality retains about a quarter of it, the schools, and again, this is based upon the overall percentages. You know, the school gets some, and the county gets some. Under a pilot, what happens, and this isn't just because of the pilot, but as a result of the pilot, the developer is now able to afford the project and actually make some profit. And through that, what the municipality will be seeing at the end of this development is that $300,000 a year that's now generating on those eight acres, the municipality will now actually be receiving about $1.6 million. That is, again, about $1.3 million more than we're currently seeing from that site.
Is that every year?
So, good question. That is actually the first year. And I say the first year because that number actually increases every single year over the span of the pilot. So the $1.3 million that I'm using is an estimated number because, again, we don't know the exact, the exact sale price of the 102 townhomes. And the way that it works on the multifamily is the town receives in year one 10% of the annual gross revenues that the multifamily building brings in in revenue. So the town will receive quite a large benefit from that as well, getting totaled in about $1.6 million.
But the contractor never has to pay that tax? They're just getting like Pasco, you can do what you need to do?
Oh, no, they're paying taxes on all that land. And they'll pay taxes on the land until the development is completed and CEO's reached. At that point, again, instead of paying taxes on the building, it's just called a payment in lieu of taxes. So the developer, to maintain his 185 unit complex, is going to be paying somewhere around $400,000, $500,000 a year to the municipality.
What's that based on? With the land's worth or something?
No, it's based upon their annual gross revenues. They call it the AGR. So whatever dollar amount that building generates for them, an income over the course of a year, they pay 10% of that to the municipality. So we basically have a, you know...
So what's the timeline?
So the timeline for that, as we're...
No.
You mean of the construction being completed? They're estimating two to three years from now.
Do you have any use of JASIS?
I don't know, that's 100% up to the developer. I don't know which side they're going to do first. That is 100% up to them. So there are, again, so it's not that they are not going to be making payments to the town. What they are called is just not taxes, it's just called a pilot. And again, it's based upon the annual gross revenues instead of the assessed value of the building. So it's just done a little bit different.
You had mentioned in past, that you don't try to, have you tried to steady these taxes? Is that part of your plan to stabilize?
So this is a huge part of that. That is another great question. So, yeah, the, again, that site right now is generating about $300,000. We're estimating it's going to generate $1.6. Now, that's an additional $1.3 million per year that the municipality will be receiving. It's with those funds that, now, look, with every development comes some increased cost. And the balance that needs to be weighed is, does the cost of the development to the municipality cost a considerable amount less than what the development will bring in? And if this development hypothetically were to need one more DPW worker, you have to consider what the cost of an additional employee to the municipality is, and is the benefit of the additional $1.3 million enough to cover that?
And are you going to address the increased traffic level?
So, yes, I can absolutely address the traffic too. But to talk about just the numbers for a couple more minutes, that $1.3 million that we'll be seeing that we have never seen in revenues before, the intent is to begin using those funds to start paying down the $25 million of municipal debt that the municipality has. And that's one of the reasons every single year our debt service, and what we're spending in our municipal debts, is astronomical. And that's part of the reason, part of that payment goes into the amount of money that the municipality needs on an annual basis to continue to operate as we pay down the debts, no different than taking a line of credit against your house essentially and paying that out over a period of time. It's just how we borrow. So with that, again, that $1.3 million, the intent is to start using portions of that to begin paying down the municipal debt over a period of time. And if we're able to do that, we'll have better interest rates, we'll be able to have less debt, which means lower taxes and stabilizing the taxes without seeing incredible increases every single year that go along with just the, you know, regular standard of living. So I'm going to take a real quick question from Facebook here. Says, "I respected the need to do something on Main Street. More condos will only overtax the public schools. Why are we not looking into using this land to make it a more family-friendly or build an annex for the over-private schools?" So, that's a great question. And that was absolutely a consideration that we looked into when looking at this development. And the schools are certainly one of the things that are extremely expensive for municipalities to maintain, and a significant part of your taxes, about 50% of it, goes to funding the schools. And I say that because I have spent countless time with the superintendent and business administrator of our schools discussing the numbers. And right now, it's estimated based upon the newest Rutgers study, that that entire development will bring in about 70 kids to our school districts, and that's from K through 12. I say that a little bit with some questions, only because in the most recent developments that we've seen here in town, for example, 44 Main Street, there's 34 units there. There are zero students in our Little Falls public schools out of that building. The 24 townhomes that were recently built on East Blazy Road, there are two students in our public schools. The homes that are on, the homes that are on the top of Woods Road, the, there'll be a total of 24 homes, they're not all entirely built yet, right now there are zero students taxing our public schools out of those homes. So, yes, it is a concern. I don't believe that the numbers that people anticipate to be the figure necessarily will come to fruition. I hope not, but I say that, that even if it is, in meeting with the superintendent and the business administrator, they've indicated to me that our schools are more than capable of handling that number of students. That in fact, just a number of years ago, that's like eight, nine, 10 years ago, School Three was not even open. It wasn't open in Monaloo to the schools a number of years ago. We now do have the additional space that we require to educate our students. We have class sizes right now that are incredibly small, and by adding one child or two children to an already incredibly small class size, now, it's not going to have a negative impact to the education that we're able to provide to the students here in Little Falls. Our teachers are doing an incredible job. This will not negatively impact our schools' ratings. We're going to be able to continue to provide the same excellent education, and again, it was not a concern that was expressed by the schools. Now, some have indicated that there's a concern that, well, the school's not going to get the taxes from the payment in lieu of taxes that the municipality receives. That's a fallacy. And the point was actually brought up last night at the council meeting, that Jersey City saw major issues with their schools' fundings as a result of the pilots that the municipality gave to developers. And it's absolutely true. But the reason is, the way that Jersey City is structured, and I've actually done some more homework on this today, the municipality or the, there, the city, funds the schools. They're a Type 1 district. It's very different than here. And I say that because the schools, the way they operate here in Little Falls, because I'm going to make up some figures here, but assuming that the schools need $12 million a year to operate this year, when those buildings are no longer there and the payment is, the payment in lieu of taxes is being made, the way that the school operates is next year, if the school board determines that they need to hire another teacher for whatever, a new music teacher, a new arts teacher, whatever it may be, and they want to add additional programs, in that year they need $12.2 million to operate, they need an additional $200,000. All that happens is they essentially send a bill to the municipality, and the municipality, through your taxes, raises the additional $200,000 that was not raised the year prior, so there's no negative impact to the schools. The pilot is not taking money away from the schools, away from the students, negatively impacting their budgets. They will be able to continue to operate, there is no loss to them whatsoever as a result of the pilot. So that was something that absolutely needed to be addressed. And again, as far as making these family-friendly or building amexes for schools, right now, again, our schools are not overcrowded by any stretch of the imagination in my conversations with the superintendent and business administrator. And making things family-friendly, as much as I do love making things family-friendly, and as much as I would love to make additional improvements to our rec center, which is things that we're, I'll get into in just a few minutes, family-friendly and grass doesn't necessarily help us with our taxes. And when I ran for mayor two and a half years ago, the number one concern that I had expressed to me at every single door that I knocked on was taxes. Taxes are high, what do you do about taxes? And the easiest way to explain how we can address the taxes in the municipality are that there's really two components to, I call it, three components to a budget. The first is, how much does it cost for the town to operate on an annual basis? And the answer to that is about $19 million. The second part is, how much money does the town make in fees and revenues and in monies that the town can generate from people paying anything other than taxes? That's part A. Part B is, what's the difference between that number and the $19 million that the town needs to generate in taxes to pay that entire $19 million? And to answer that question, as we're able to generate more money from other taxpayers, from other developments, the amount of money that we need to generate from the current tax base, that's you and I right now, goes down, or is able to be stabilized. Because even if the taxes continue to slowly raise for additional services, whatever it may be, if, I guess the best way to explain it is, if the $19 million is being paid by 10 people this year, everybody's paying $1.9 million. But if we add 10 more people to the town, and now there's 20 people to pay that same $19 million, everybody's costs just got cut in half because you have additional people paying the same amount of money at the end of the day.
Mr. Mayor, I don't think anybody's arguing about how much money, you know, these new pilot programs are racing, and how good it is for Little Falls and all that. Nobody's arguing with it. Everybody's arguing, arguing with the breaks that the new homeowners are going to have. They're not going to be paying 100% of taxes like you and I are paying. They're going to be paying, start paying 75%. That doesn't mean that they're going to be using 75% of the services that the Little Falls provides. They're still going to be using 100% of all the services, but they're going to pay for 30 years, 30 years down the road, they're going to be paying the same, they're going to be taxed at the same rate that you and I, if you're a homeowner, that you and I are paying. And that, that was what we pounded last night. That was what we thought was unfair.
So, and that figure moves from 75% to 95% all the way through the pilot.
I understand, but it starts at 75, and then it goes to 1.5 or...
Sure, and again, the reason behind that...
But it gets to be 100%. That owner gets to pay the same amount, the same rate that I paid 30 years down the road.
That doesn't sound right.
No, that's not accurate, that's not true.
$1 million more to the town, then...
I, we understand all that.
So the discussion here is really that, the discussion here is that that property, because the developer's attempting to recuperate the investment into the property, the intent is that that money, or that that sale price for that unit is actually going to be a little bit higher. Because the investors, the developers are looking to recuperate the funds that they invested. So, those people are going to essentially overpay for their unit. When you overpay for your unit, the taxes, even at a lower rate, end up coming far more equal to what the total payment would otherwise be. So, and again, that's part of the pilot and the way to bring in the developer. And again, I say that because we're stuck with, again, the balancing act of, we can either continue to have the businesses and buildings that are there now that were never going to be redeveloped or developed, because there were a number of those that were up for sale for several years before this developer showed any interest in purchasing those properties. And nothing happened with those properties until this developer came in. And I say that because it's crucial to understand that that might have been the case for another 50 years. Those properties may have remained exactly the same. The only way, and again, the balancing act, to bring in the additional $1.3 million was to offer the pilot. So that is part of, again, what we need to consider, of, should we have allowed that property to continue to generate the $300,000 a year that it was generating in the condition that it's in now, which if you've been in that area, you know there's some of the buildings, not all of them, but certainly most of them in that area could certainly use a sprucing up, to say the least. And again, balancing that against the increased taxes that the municipality is going to, or the increased revenues that the municipality is going to have to offset the taxes that you and I and everyone else in this town pays. One of the next questions on Facebook Live, and it was actually asked here as well, is in the area, how will it affect traffic? The traffic in that area is bad enough. So that is something that, again, was certainly considered. Now, we had a number of traffic engineers, we had a traffic engineer come and testify before the planning board about the traffic in that area of town. And the reason that I don't believe that the traffic will become a major issue as a result of this development is that where we see the biggest congestion in town is generally, had been in the past, as you approach Union Boulevard and then Stevens Ave, when they're heading eastbound later in the day. And Councilwoman Seaman had a great suggestion some time ago, where she indicated that by changing the timing of the traffic light at Stevens Ave, we'd be able to have a much better traffic flow through the middle of town, and it would alleviate a lot of that traffic heading eastbound in the later portion of the day. And we've extended that traffic light, and the traffic through the middle of Main Street by Stevens Ave has now actually been much better, and I think noticeably better, over the past couple of months. That said, the eastbound traffic that's coming to this development is going to be off of Main Street when they reach the development, prior to ever getting to the congested area of town. So that's something that I don't believe will pose a major issue. The other direction, obviously, the westbound traffic there, that is something where, again, there's generally not a problem in the later portion of the day. I know there's some issues in that area in the earlier morning as people are heading out that way, but we usually see the conflicting path, traffic patterns not being an issue for this development where it's located in proximity to the center of the town. So we're hopeful that, based upon the traffic, you know, engineer's report, that we really won't see much additional traffic and any real negative impact to the traffic throughout town during that time of day. Sure.
Is there a start date for this pilot project? You said it's going to be about two to three years to complete?
Correct.
Do you have an approximate start date?
Well, I can tell you, the planning board has not yet affirmed the resolutions yet for the developer, so that, I'm sure, will be coming up within the next meeting or two. After that happens, the developer, I think, needs to finalize some of the substantial contamination or the testing issues that he had there, because there's going to be some remediation and capping and a number of, you know, issues that he faces along those lines. And that's why this timeframe is not, we're not going to see this thing up next year. So there is a period of time before we see it finalized.
Several years.
Correct. So I can't give you more than that, the timeline, I really don't know.
And you mentioned the paint, Rossi Paint, and the oil bodies, is not, is not part of...
No, they were not acquired by the developer. And to be very clear, this entire development, the developer acquired each and every one of these properties on the road. We were very specific in the redevelopment plan that this was absolutely a non-contamination plan. So if the developer was not able to acquire property, the municipality would at no point interject and take the property by eminent domain to give it to a developer because it would be beneficial to the town. So this was absolutely non-contamination.
I think there's one or two, I think there's one that did not convert or was not sold. There's, isn't there one holdout?
There, I think there was a holdout, but I think they had to strike a deal because in order to appear before the planning board, you need to be able to provide proof that you have at least a contract in place with each and every one of the property owners for which you're appearing before the planning board with. So the deal must have been struck, otherwise they would not have been eligible to appear before the planning board and include that lock-in lock in their application.
And going west, does it stop at the railroad tracks or is it...
No, it stops before the railroad tracks.
It stops before?
Because Rossi Paint and the auto body and the...
So the old foundry is not part of this law? That old foundry is...
You mean heading east?
Over the railroad track?
Oh, over the road, no, 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 it stops at the auto body.
There's a foundry that was...
Right, no, that is not part of this project at all. We are on the other side of the tracks, no, that's not part of this.
Is there any protection, what's the period of time, 30 or 35 years?
I'm sorry?
The pilot is...
It runs for 30 years.
Is there any possibility that they could pull out of the deal somewhere?
No.
Halfway through or something, they just leave?
No. I mean, if they sold to someone else, the pilot transfers to that person. So we have some other questions here. This is a great one. When are we going to pave our streets? Couldn't agree more. I live in the Great Knot section of town, which ended up looking much like the Jackson Park section of town did a year or two ago, and every single road on that side of town has been torn up by PSENG. Fortunately or unfortunately, utilities have almost any pattern they want, where they're making improvements to services, including tearing up roads that were paved the year before because they didn't have more than a one-year plan to provide us. In fact, PSENG has not told us what roads they are going to be paving, tearing up next year, and they have nothing to give us. So unfortunately, there were some roads that were just paved last year that PSENG came in and tore up. The good news is, any road that was resurfaced within the past five years, PSENG is required to resurface curb to curb. Any road that was paved prior to that, they are going to be flipping the bill for 50% of the roadway. And the municipality this year has actually substantially increased our road resurfacing program to ensure that we have no roads that are halfway paved down the middle. So any roads that were torn up are going to be paved curb to curb, the municipality picking up the portion if PSENG is not required to. Now, the timing, we require a three-month settlement period before we resurface a road after a ditch is done. So there is, again, the three-month period, because oftentimes, as you may see even now driving through some of the ditches, they begin to settle and sink. So if we were to resurface the road now, even after milling it, usually where that ditch is after just a month or two, would already have a part of it that's sunk in, and that's something that we try to avoid, especially if a road's supposed to last us in excess of 20 years. So that is something that we will be on. It will probably happen if PSENG concludes their work in April, as I'm hopeful they will. Hopefully this summer, you know, July, August, we'll have all of those roads resurfaced. One of the other questions is, will a video of the town hall meeting be posted on the town's website? If we can make that happen, I'm sure we can do that, I'd be happy to figure that out. And the next question is, well, with all these people, will places like ShopRite be able to handle the need? So, great question. So, great question. I do know that, I, I, well, I believe that ShopRite is in the process of expanding their store and making it a little bit bigger. I don't know exactly what that means more than that, but I would certainly hope, I mean, I would certainly hope they'd be able to, to handle all of us. I like to eat, so I'd be very upset if they kicked me out. I'm gonna take a couple more from, from Facebook Live here. Okay, now one was answered. And we have any updates about the Passaic River? I think I addressed that one earlier. And can you confirm that Main Street is an over fifty-five community?
The redevelopment.
So, the re- the current redevelopment plan in the Singac redevelopment area is not an over fifty-five development. It is an open market development. That said, I will address while we are talking about what that development will entail. There is a portion of COA that will be addressed in the redevelopment zone. And I know that was a concern that someone had mentioned to me earlier here tonight, prior to the start of this. And the COA obligation that the developer has, they were able to negotiate a fifteen percent set aside of their total obligation. So, of the two hundred and eighty-seven units, the developer is required to take fifteen percent of that and develop them into the, their, their, their COA obligation. And what that means is that fifteen, is that of that fifteen percent, generally, a third are low income, a third are moderate income, and a third are, I forget the technical, there's a technical term for the, the, the moderate income that they, that they have. So, a third of the obligation, or I'm sorry, the fifteen percent obligation will only put in the multifamily unit, in the apartment buildings, and they are not putting any of them into the town construction. So, those will be in the multifamily.
Yeah, where is the multifamily gonna be? Is that gonna be like in the area where that bar is? Near me?
So, yes, where the bar is, up to...
That's where the low-income house is gonna be?
No, there's no, there's no, it's not low-income housing. It's not, it's, it's not the...
Affordable housing.
It's not, it's, it's, it's not subsidized housing. It's none of that. It is simply, so the state now has passed something that everyone refers to as commonly as COA. And all new developments that have happened throughout the state in excess of five, five units or more are required to meet something called, they call it the COA obligation. And COA stands for the Council on Affordable Housing. And what that means is that there's a mandatory twenty, well, depending on what towns negotiate, and then how much of their obligation they've chipped into in the past, which most of them is almost zero. There is a twenty percent obligation that most towns have to build and develop affordable housing on any development that occurs throughout the entire municipality or city, whatever it may be. So, what that, all that that means is that the developer is required to offer some of the housing at a lower rate. So, if you qualify in your income eligibility and you make forty thousand dollars a year, you may very well qualify as a single individual earning forty thousand dollars for a unit in that building that may otherwise go for an average of twenty-five hundred dollars a month. You may get that same unit for a thousand dollars a month, but meeting the income requirements.
So, there's not gonna be Section Eight?
No, it's not. There, there's, there's, there's no Section Eight subsidized housing. It is simply affordable housing that the developer is required to reduce the fair market value of in accordance with the COA obligation.
Okay, because I hooked up on the internet what affordable housing is, and that's Section Eight.
So, affordable housing is a very broad term. That certainly, Section Eight does fall under affordable housing.
Right, but that's not gonna be there.
But affordable housing doesn't necessarily mean that it's Section Eight.
But it could be.
No, the, the developers, again, it's subsidized, it's not, it's not subsidized by the state. It's not, it's not housing that the, the state pays for. It's simply reduced-rate housing.
Okay, well, that'd be offered to people living in, in Little Falls?
So, that is actually a list that is not maintained by the municipality. That is a list that is maintained by the state. And if you believe you meet the income eligibility requirements, you can apply to the state in order to make their list. And so, so, but the answer is yes. Little Falls residents can certainly sign up for it if they meet the income eligibility.
Okay, are they gonna be careful of who they let in?
So, they don't really get to choose. They don't really get to choose who they let in. And in fact, ironically, I, I spoke to the developer about this. And his words to me were actually, "You're not gonna believe who my best tenants are. They're my tenants that are there by COA." And he says, "Look, am I making money on them? No. But I will tell you, they always have a wreath on their door, a floor mat in front of their door, and when somebody else litters, they're the first person to tell if they littered." So, just because they're paying a thousand dollars for a unit that someone who's making two hundred thousand dollars a year is paying four thousand dollars a month for it, doesn't necessarily mean that they're the ones that are going to be bad tenants. I think bad tenants come in all shapes and sizes and all income levels. So, and I don't think that that's necessarily the, the issue that we're gonna face there.
I have a recent question. Are all these building projects, are they spoken about on the website at all?
No, because we're not promoting through the municipality private development.
Okay.
We'd, we'd essentially be a billboard for private developments. I'm just answering the questions that are coming up about the ones, as they do. Sure, good night.
I have a question.
Sure.
One about the housing. Given how many of the units that are coming in compared to the number of houses that were, you lost due to the flood buyouts?
So, another great, another, a really great question that I began to address last night at the council meeting. And it's something that I'll actually get into right now about the redevelopment. We've actually lost a hundred and forty homes due to FEMA buyouts. We've lost six homes to MSU. We've also lost War Trucking to MSU. We've also lost a lot of properties due to Route Three and Route Forty-Six redevelopment. So, to answer your question, the municipality has lost hundreds and hundreds and hundreds, about millions of dollars.
My question about that, I'm asking the number of buildings and the number of families that left.
Sure.
Okay, because, you know, my, my, my means the library. We were four percent undersized according to the last census because of the MSU students being moved. Yet there are more houses being built than are being replaced and we're even more undersized than we were for, for a size difference. The building is undersized from the number of people in the community according to the state guidelines. If you, if you lost one hundred houses and you're going to be building two hundred and fifty more, we're even more undersized according to the state guidelines.
Sure, that, that's something that, again...
That's what I was asking.
I, I don't think, you know, the library has its own budget that is funded by the state department.
I was asking because we're your under-re国民s of size. I was trying to recall that, how many more people would be coming in?
I, I don't know the exact numbers. I can estimate based upon...
But really, with, with, there's gonna be a net gain of half of homes in the community compared to what we had, what we lost.
Yes, I would absolutely estimate that there'll be a net gain of homes.
My other question was way back to Pepin, because I don't have the information.
Sure.
We get a lot of animals that are coming from there right now, and we get all the deer, making everything in my yard. How much water to that, that, sort of, is being watered and moved? Because I'm hoping that it won't have more animals where it's placed when their homes were, were covered with the dirt this year, last year, coming into my yard and walking on deer food and not being able to throw any flowers anymore. Do you mean, I can't hold on to let go so we can, we can finalize that?
I don't know the exact timing. I'm assuming within the next several months we'll be relocating that once it's tested. So, sure.
Hi, possibly get an update on the Lower Francisco flood with the county and what's going on?
Sure, so Lower Francisco Ave, as many people know, kind of as you approach the Cedar Grove Road area, oftentimes is impacted during flash flood incidents that there's substantial water at the bottom there, and a lot of times, we need to actually close down the bottom of Francisco Ave, one of our main east-west corridors. We actually have met with the county recently, as you're aware, and the pipes that run under the Francisco Ave to the Pepin River are actually filled about fifty to sixty percent with debris, stone, rocks, things of the sort. The county is required to maintain that. The county doesn't have trucks big enough to do it themselves. So, they're actually going to be bringing in some contractor to, to maintain that and to, to clean those, which I'm hoping will happen within the next couple of months at this point because I'd like to continue that.
I think about a week, week and a half ago, there was a couple trucks from Pittsburgh that were from a boring company, kind of a...
So, yeah, there, there has been some boring through town. That's also related to PSENG electric improvements. They're going to be running a main conduit from the substation in Cedar Grove to the station that I believe is in, I know it's going down Patterson Ave, Blackwater and Totowa, and in that direction. So, that is, that's in relation to that.
But they were also parked right at that flooding area, so that's...
I'm un- I'm unaware. They may have been there for that as well, but not for the boring that I know of. So, we have a Facebook question. It says, "Three of the properties in the redevelopment area were sold in the last four years. Seven of the properties are owned by the same person. This is the same person who owns the properties that are considered blighted. Why was this situation allowed to exist?" So, there are, again, because a property is blighted or not something that is, I guess, well-maintained, it doesn't necessarily mean that there was a violation of code or that there was any sort of issue in which a ticket or summons could be issued. I'm sure some of us have seen houses that we say, "Wow, that could really use a good cleaning. That one could be cleaned up." And while we might can't afford it better than someone else, and while we may not like the color or the condition that it's in, doesn't necessarily mean that just because the paint is peeling on the, the wood siding that the home is in any sort of violation of any, either health code or building code violation. So, again, that's part of why this area was so severely in need of redevelopment and something that needed to be addressed. I will tell you, I would like to, I'll take more, two more questions from Facebook, and then I'm gonna jump to a couple of other topics about things we have going on in town. So, this one here, "Is, is there any plan to fix the curbs and sidewalks near Hobson and Main Street where the water company property is near PV? Because it's very dangerous for students." That is one where, because they failed to maintain the property, we're actually able to send them a summons or a violation. And because of the time of year in the winter and the way concrete cures, they actually asked for extension to be able to re-pour their sidewalks in curbing in order to improve that area of town. So, yes, there is a plan to fix that. The water company is aware, but they will be making improvements relatively soon when the weather breaks and they're able to cure the concrete properly. The next question is, "When will taxes Little Falls collects reach one point six million dollars?" And I'm assuming this is in connection to the redevelopment property. Now, the one point, the municipality will begin seeing that actual one point six million dollars once all of the townhomes are sold and once the building reaches full capacity because, again, the annual gross revenues are only gonna be at maximized when the building is in capacity. And the townhomes will only begin rece- receiving the pilot on those once CEOs are issued. So, once everything is occupied, we will begin seeing that one point six million dollars. Sorry, everyone. So, this question is, "How much taxes were lost due to buyouts?" I can only give, right now, on the spot, a, an estimation of the amount of money that was lost due to buyouts. And what I can assume on the FEMA buyouts is that if the hundred and forty homes were all worth an estimated two hundred and fifty thousand dollars to the town, that means there's about one point one million dollars lost at the current tax rate to the municipality due to those hundred and forty homes being lost. Again, not including MSU, not including War Trucking, not including Route Forty-Six.
Does it make any sense?
The, sure. If there were a hundred and forty homes in the municipality that were all valued at about two hundred and fifty thousand dollars, the total amount of taxes that those homes would have paid on an annual basis is about one point one million dollars.
Each, you figure each house, each homeowner, each house will pay an average of two thousand five hundred dollars, correct?
No, I figure the total taxes at two hundred and fifty thousand dollars at our tax rate would have them paying just, just under eight thousand dollars a year.
Well, so that's not, that's not, what, the town gets?
The, the question is, "How much taxes were lost due to buyouts?" The town's portion is a quarter. But also understanding that, that amount, that needs to be made up for our schools by the rest of the taxpayers. Meaning, the amount of money that our school has to operate did not go down because those homes were lost. So, we're then making up for all of that as well. So, but the, the, the total amount of taxes that those homes paid, if they averaged two hundred and fifty thousand dollars apiece, is an excess of one point one million dollars. And the question, this question is, "How much taxes will the developer pay next year?" So, the answer to that is, and again, I guess this is back to the redevelopment zone, the answer to that is, the number cannot go below what they are currently paying in taxes. They will at least continue to maintain that to the municipality. Next, I'm gonna jump around a little bit here and get off the development unless there's other questions which we can come back to. But I wanna talk to everyone a little bit about the rec center and what we have going on there. Our rec center in Little Falls is used daily when it's nice out. Sometimes, as Mr. Pace will confirm, multiple times over the course of the day and several games even during the, the nighttime. So, we constantly have individuals in our building during the winter months and for the indoor seasons, in our field during the outdoor seasons. And Little Falls Athletic Club and the Little Falls Football Parents Association have recently approached myself and the council about the possibility of installing turf down into the field. It's a major issue during our summer, fall, and spring sports where our fields, because of the amount of usage they have and how wet that area gets, they become completely unusable for good portions of the season. After every single rain, undoubtedly, you can't play a game on that field the evening that it rained or sometimes, oftentimes, the following day. It's become an issue for us to the point where the amount of time that we spend delaying seasons and putting off games, it's really affected a lot of things here in town for those groups and for our, our young residents here. And something that we've been looking into is the cost of putting turf down across all of Dova. And the estimates right now on the total costs of Dova Field to turf the entire area is somewhere between two and around two million dollars. Now, it's a substantial price tag, but fortunately, the municipality is looking to receive about a half a million dollars from the county that can be applied to that number. We've also applied to Green Acres with the hopes of getting somewhere around the seven hundred and fifty thousand dollar mark. So, we may be, we may be able to mitigate the cost of the turf at Dova down to basically under a hundred thousand dollars a year over the ten-year period that we would have to fund the, the field over. That said, that is something that is absolutely, that the municipality is absolutely able to handle on an annual basis. That cost in our budget, especially in lieu of the, the, the payment that we're going to be seeing over the next couple of years, is something that the township can easily sustain, like make an incredible vast improvement to our field. And the real benefit there is also that we would then be able to rent out our field, something that we haven't really been able to do in the past, especially with our new state of the art, state of the, state of the art lights. It's something that our field would need to have more usage with, and it's something that could be incredible for our kids. There's also plans this year to install an air conditioning system in our rec center, something that our kids have been in desperate need of for a very long time. So, we're in the process of designing that. A building's that massive with that much of an opening, it's not just a regular run-of-the-mill air conditioner that you can put in. So, there's a lot of engineering and a lot of consideration that goes into the types of air conditioning units and the size of them. So, we, we are working on that there. We also are looking to refinish our floors at the rec center this year. They're in excess of seventeen years old now. I watch kids play basketball on them, and sometimes they'll, they'll dribble over a spot and the ball will almost just not bounce at all because there's so many dead spots in the floor. It's something that, again, has been put off year after year after year. These floors are not made to last seventeen years. It has to a certain extent because it's been forced to. But making some improvements at our rec center is something that I think is absolutely needed and something that we are, again, waiting too long to do, and it's been put off. So, there are going to be some major improvements made to our recreation center and recreation facilities for our younger population here.
Did you say a grant from ACRIS, Green ACRIS?
Correct.
But then Little Falls will have no authority over the, the field. Who plays on that field?
No, that's, that's, that's not true.
Green ACRIS is a federal-funded program.
Right, and there, there are certain restrictions having to do with the amount of property in our Rossi, our registered open space inventory that can be moved. But that, that's not a, that's not really a concern here for us. We, we do still get to use the field as our own. So, there's a question here, "Won't the Twenty-Four Woods Road..." So there's a question here, "Won't the twenty-four Woods Road homes, twenty-five Lindsay Road townhouses, and the fifty townhouses, townhome houses off of Center Ave make up for the lost taxes due to the buyouts?" So those in and of themselves may help us come back to close to the number of, the amount of money that we've lost as a result of the buyouts alone, the hundred-and-forty units. But that brings us back to our net zero number, and net zero means that as expenses continue to increase, so are taxes. And the point is to do better than net zero. And the only way to do that is, again, to bring in more revenues and more income to the town in order to offset the amount of taxes that each of us pay as individual owners here in town. The next thing I wanna give a quick update on is this particular building here. Now, this building is very unique, there's a lot of really neat features about it, but it definitely also needs some improvements that have been put off for far too long. We actually were the recipients of an eighty-five thousand dollar CDBG grant from the county, that's a Community Development Block grant, that allowed us to make some ADA improvements. And the back door here at the civic center right now is, as any of you know who might need some help getting up and downstairs, is certainly not ADA accessible. There's either stairs or a ramp on the side that is far too steep to accommodate a wheelchair. So we're going to be making some substantial improvements here, adding a ramp, an electronic door that's automated and will open, as well as making some improvements to the parking lot in this area and to this area here in town. So that is something that, one of the other things that we're gonna be looking to make some improvements to over the course of this year. The other thing that I'd like to talk to everyone about before taking some other questions is our, our former municipal building. Our former municipal building is a building that has sat vacant now for now over ten years and almost seventeen years since the municipal portion of it was relocated out. About ten years ago, the police department was relocated out. And it has sat vacant for, this one too, far too long. The municipality, several months ago, issued a request for proposals for improvements to be made to the building in its current state without the, taking down the exterior walls and essentially the refishing the building as is. The municipality did not receive any actual bids from any contractors as a result of that RFP. So we are unfortunately, based upon that response, unable to really maintain the building as is. Now, we have since sent out an RFP requesting just any site improvements to that building now that would require a developer to reconstruct the building largely similar to, at least aesthetically, the current building that is presently standing there. And the intention behind this is that, that really is a neat building. It really does have a really cool design and look to it, but it's just vacant and every developer is saying they can't do it. And what that means for a municipality, unfortunately, is that if the town tried to take on the task of repairing that building, because the way that bidding and such is presented to a township, it would actually make the project at least a hundred-and-fifty percent up to three-hundred percent more expensive than it would be for a private developer to do it. So unfortunately, based on that, it's almost unsustainable for the town to do that. So we are looking, again, to see what can be done there, we're keeping all options on the table, we're looking to see, again, what the responses will be, and we're hopeful that something will be in place, will be in that place that still maintains that sort of really neat look that that building has always had for us here in town. You know, the beauty of it being right next to our immediate downtown area. So that's something that we're also have on the table right now. Are there any other questions that I can answer before we start to wrap up in a while?
What do you want to use to build the board to disintegrate it?
Well, that's just it, we left the RFP open to any and all suggestions. We didn't specify, what, what we did specify is that it needs to conform to our, our downtown requirements, the things that we have going on there. We are open to a, essentially, any type of development, if they're looking to do a mixed use, that may be permitted, so there are certainly a number of options that are on the table there.
Um, I heard you say earlier about the water is tested in the Peckman. Is it ever tested in the Passaic River? 'Cause I see a lot of, on, on the river, and I see what goes down.
So the water itself is not tested, just the, the dirt and the contents that are pulled from the river are? I don't know that anything can really legally be pulled from the bottom of the Passaic River without massive DEP and other regulations being cleared?
Well, 'cause on Su- Sunday, I saw, um, I was walking here for a couple of minutes, coming down the river, and looked almost oily, a big patch of oily stuff coming down the river.
I don't even want to imagine what is dumping anywhere in the river.
Okay, and, well, on Saturdays in the, um, spring and summer, there are landscapers higher up that dump their stuff, 'cause we see all the cuttings coming down the river.
That's an issue I-
Have you done about that?
I, I guess unless we know where that's coming from, I don't know how we could do that. I mean, that could be coming from three miles upriver for, for all that we know, so I don't know how exactly that would be addressed otherwise. What I can tell you is, I have another great, I think this is exciting news about the Passaic River. I've been speaking to several crew teams, not really from the area, but crew teams that now launch out of sites down in the, the river, down towards Newark Bay, out of Carney, out of those areas. And there's been some interest in using Little Falls as a launch site for some crew teams, such as Seton Hall Prep, some of the other high schools that, that have crew teams. And they've indicated that the area of the river above the, the Little Falls in town, such as by, behind School Three, and some of those areas there that the municipality owns property, they've shown some interest in actually launching their crew teams from there, and ironically, in offsetting revenues as we've been talking about, unfortunately, the town does run as a business, and these crew teams currently pay eleven, twelve thousand dollars a year for little launch sites that they have in, in Carney and in other areas where they're not really close to their, their school or their home base, but they make the trek there because that's where the, the launch sites are. Some of these schools have actually expressed, like I said, an interest in using Little Falls, and the price that comes along with it and what we could receive, ironically, from a crew team is actually probably at least a hundred percent, about two-hundred percent more than what that home that was on that site was previously paying. So although we might have lost one of those loans, and again, these can only be done on the, the, the properties owned by Little Falls, the municipality, not the FEMA bought-out land, but there are some properties that the Passaic River Coalition purchased and transferred to the town, and those we can actually launch some, some boats off of. So we're trying to bring a positive spin back to the river rather than always having a negative connotation that it has for us here in Little Falls. I'm tired of speaking to relatives from across the country saying, "Oh, Little Falls, I saw it on the news, there's water." It's never a good thing. So we're trying to get away from that by addressing it with our, our Congresswoman, by putting the positive spin with the crew team, so there's a lot of good coming along.
Okay, I feel like so.
Is there any other questions before we begin to wrap up? Sure.
One last question, this isn't a question for the, it's fine, I am curious to die out of taxpayers. Do you have any statistic to show the percentage of people in the town who have children versus those who do not?
I'm certain that information could be obtained.
I'm very curious.
And the only way I know how to go about doing that is find out how many students are in the schools, divide that number by the total number of residents, but, or the number of households, but it's something that, I, I, I do not know that number off the top of my head at all.
You know, sometimes things come out in the building, and I think, okay, I see what it's passed, doesn't, and you're talking about those improvements, and I'm not saying that, I wouldn't, I'm just curious, the percentage of families and children versus those that are not?
Yeah, I, I, I don't know that statistic at all, sorry. The census may have, actually, we have a new big census project coming up in 2020, which is, there's actually a big census project every ten years, so 2020, our census is up again. It's actually far more important than people think to have accurate readings for your census, because it really goes to determining your, the gerrymandering of the districts, congressionally, you know, at the state level, you know, nationally, so there, there, there's so many important things in the census, and Councilwoman Courtner has been tasked with getting us an accurate number here in Little Falls, probably much to her dismay, because it is a very time-consuming and difficult process, but she's gonna be assisting the county really, and everybody reports back to the county in, in getting that number down. So are there any other questions before we wrap up? Sure.
I don't have a question, but I wanted to say, I think the town hall's a great idea to, to talk one-on-one with Mayor, and you did homework, you did all of it.
Well, I'm happy for you. So, okay, one more.
Is this the first, or how many of you have?
This is the first town hall.
Oh, it is?
This is something that, like I said, I hope to either begin doing semi-annually or even quarterly, just like this. I want it to be informal, I want it to be, you know, everybody coming jeans after work, and we'll talk about what's going on, and we'll figure it out together. We all have a common goal here, I think, and that's to make Little Falls the best town possible, and to be able to afford to continue to live here. So with those things in mind, I want to thank everyone for coming, and I really appreciate everybody's time, all the questions.